I call the order of Swain County Department of Municipal Work System, April first, two thousand twenty-five, five thirty ten. Governor, your lead is not pledged, sir.
Face the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. First item up for discussion is the budget amendment number five. Ms. Lottie?
So this is, we had a little bit of discussion last week at our budget meeting. We, uh, the county had received a hundred and twenty-five doll, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from Dogwood for the foster care home. We are nearing the end. We've used, I think, right at everything, but maybe a couple hundred dollars in that. There are a few things that we still need to get. Um, so Bobby had come talking about that, and it looks like it's about twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we, we should not go over that, but it may not cost us all of that either. So what's not spent would go back into the general fund. But if we can have a budget amendment, just to make sure that we have that twenty thousand to cover the rest to get this house up and running.
We got any discussion on that?
Well.
Is it, what, Mr. Chairman, what exactly are we liking?
Well, we've got to put the trim, the doors, some of the plumbing fixtures. That's basically what it is.
Furniture?
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
Some of the furniture, the cabinets, uh, things like that. I believe, I believe the twenty thou, we probably won't need all of the twenty thousand dollars, but I wanted to make sure we had enough to finish it. And we've got a ramp on the outside we've got to build, and a, a deck, a small deck, and four some logs. So it'll, it'll take close to the twenty thousand dollars.
I think this house is a good time for the camp.
Right. Well, I knew pretty well that a hundred and twenty-five thousand wouldn't cover it because it's a twenty-one hundred square foot house and, uh, no, but we have kept the cost as low as we could. We've used a lot of in-stock items we had, so it's kept the cost low.
Let's, let's keep the twenty thousand to finish.
I agree. Do we need to vote on that? Wait, do you want us to vote on that tonight?
If you don't mind, um, we can go ahead and that we can have it approved and they can be continuing working.
I'll make a motion when we approve.
Everybody made a motion. Everybody said. Budget number five. I'll find a place right here. Pass it, man. Thank you, guys. Uh, next up is department head reports. We'll start off with the tax office.
So much more than just the tax office. So I'm just gonna do a little rundown of all the little different parts of our office. Um, we have two people who work in the DMV. Lee Backtrachler transferred in August of twenty-four from DSS. Tracy Anthony hired on January, um, um, at two thousand twenty-five. They are super friendly, very nice to people. You can teach a skill set. You can't teach people to be nice to other people. So they're both very good at their jobs. Um, I have spoken with Lottie and I have reached out to the state about looking to expand some of the services that we have inside the tag, uh, inside the tag office, such as boat registration. A lot of people buy and sell boats in the winter, and as you know, Lark is closed. Our P plates and instant titles, um, that would bring in a little bit more revenue for that part of the office. Um, that part's just really simple, so that's all that I've got for that one. In the mapping department, since Ruth Ann retired in January of this year, um, we have Sierra Watkins. We, she hired on around April or May of two thousand twenty-four. She came to us from a local surveyor. Um, she's really good at drawing things out. Um, Austin Bradley came in January of two thousand twenty-five. Um, he came from Jackson County. He worked for the Board of Elections up there as a Board of Elections specialist, and his specialty was, uh, mapping out voting jurisdictions. So he had two years of experience with Jackson County, so he's going to be eligible to become a GIS certified mapper after he tests for that in August of this year. So that's a really good thing. Um, in the assessor's office, Jessica Danner works down there, and Beverly Anthony transferred back down there, January of two thousand twenty-five. Um, they're, they've been with the county for several years. Uh, Beverly, um, worked for the county, she left for a time, and so now she has to do all of her recertifications because you have to do two year, uh, every two years you have to do thirty hours of continuing ed. And when she moved off, all of her education, um, died out. So she's gonna be doing her continuing education to do her recertifications this year. In two thousand twenty-four, we did a boathouse reevaluation. Um, we discovered a little more than seven million dollars in value, equaling about twenty-eight thousand dollars in taxes. It had been twenty-one years since the boathouses had been looked at. It was actually met with very little complaints from boathouse owners. There's a hundred and sixty of them. There may have been less than five complained about it when they called and realized that we actually had been down there, we had looked at all of them, we took pictures of all of them, they were pretty okay with it. Um, we are going to be putting boats, we're gonna do a boat reevaluation this year. We get a list from Wildlife that tells me every vessel that's registered inside Swain County. And then we have a boat evaluation service provider where we send that list, and then they turn around and send us the list of values back. It's third party, so it's completely neutral, which, you know, helps with people complaining. Um, we are looking at a revow coming up out of the assessor's office this year. Uh, we're looking to start the reevaluation process this year. Um, it's expensive, but everything is. Um, the board approved, uh, twenty thousand dollars for me to do a business audit in two thousand and twenty-four. Unfortunately, when Ruth Ann, um, got sick last year, I also assumed a lot of the mapping responsibilities, so I was unable to do that reevaluation in twenty-four, but I am looking to do that this coming year. I've already started reaching out to, um, providers that will come in and do this for us. We just don't have the staff to go out and do that. Um, I have done, um, audits for elder exemption, elder exclusions, as well as tax exemptions for two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. In doing these, I found four unnamed properties that were on the books, and they had been there for about nineteen years. This was about ten or so acres of land spread out across the county that, for some reason, had become tax exempt about nineteen years ago, when nobody had bothered to do anything with them. But, um, my mappers have remapped and looked around there, and we have found all of them but one, and we are pretty sure who that one belongs to. We've reached out to them and we're just waiting. Um, I hope to have all, all of those back on the books for two thousand and twenty-six. And in tax collections, um, I work up there, and Kim Dossie works up there. So far this year, every collections looks really good. We are, um, even with the, with the tax bill, um, with the tax, the five cent increase of last year, that was supposed to generate, um, a little more than a million dollars, and we're eight hundred and two thousand, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents over that already for this year. So that's really good. Um, I've mentioned a couple times in the past about the ten-year write-offs. In two thousand twenty-two, we wrote off six thousand, eight dollars and sixty-seven cents for thirty-eight properties. In twenty-three, we wrote off, uh, one thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents for eleven properties. And in two thousand twenty-four, we're only gonna write off a hundred and forty dollars and forty cents for two properties. And those two people have a hardship agreement with the county. They are, um, elderly and they are very sick, so they just pay what they can and they can. And we have twenty-six properties in active foreclosure right now. We have three sales coming up April the eleventh. Um, none of the properties that we have sold in the past three years have people living in them. The most part, these are abandoned properties that people just didn't want to. There were, sometimes there were homes on them, sometimes there were not, but there was no one actively living in the homes we've worked with. So, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Ruth, Ruth Ann was a good employee last year. Good worker. We are two, two, it takes two to do Ruth Ann's job.
Well, what happened was we've shifted some things around. Austin is the mapper. Sierra Watkins, she, the assessor's office had, they were doing too many things. They were, um, overworked, doing too many things. So we shifted off some of the responsibilities that the assessor's office was doing. And Sierra does most of those. She's doing all the additional training because whenever somebody is out, uh, for unforeseen circumstances, it's really hard on the county. We were in quite the bind last year to have, we had to have a third party come in and do our mapping for us, the ten months that Ruth Ann was out before she retired and before we rehired her position. So it's never good to have a department of one.
And we're doing a, a reevaluation on tax property.
Yes.
And this, when, when's it supposed to be done?
It goes in, it'll go on the books for two thousand twenty-nine. It'll be a full listing measure.
So in other words, Swain County is gonna have a tax.
Probably, on the value.
Be better to say most likely.
Um, I'll just go ahead and say yes.
Anything want to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Been very busy. Next up, who's the sheriff's office?
Sheriff, come, power. Each one of you should have an folder in front of you like this. We can go through that page by page and be here in a daylight if you want to, but I've got to summarize in about, where I can go through that in about two minutes, if y'all bear with me.
Let's do the second option.
Yeah, that's second option.
Yeah, I, that's one I want to. But I, the reason that, that file is so big, it's been a long time since I had, have given a report. So I backed up to January the first, two thousand twenty-four, and brought those numbers forward. From January first, twenty twenty-four to March, twenty twenty-five, we've had nine hundred and ninety-six inmates been booked into the jail. Seven hundred and twenty-six males and two hundred and seventy females. And you can see that on report number one in your package. Report number two shows the average stay of inmates from, from that same period, and I would have to look through my paperwork here to see, but I believe it's gonna be around eighty average per day. Report number three shows the current list of inmates and number of days they've been in jail. Number four shows charges of inmates that are, that are currently held on. Report number five shows revenue from housing inmates from other counties, state misdemeanor confinement program, and federal inmates, and that total is one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. That includes housing and transportation. We, if we take federal inmates to, uh, court, we get paid. For that, we have to have two armed officers on each transport, so the federal government reimburses us for that. And all that money, there was some confusion some time back about where that money went. It goes into the general fund. It's not specifically for the sheriff's office. It goes into the general fund and be dispersed throughout the county for all the budgets, I'm sure. Reports number six, seven, and eight show the calls answered, and we're averaging right now twenty-eight calls per day. From the same period of this report have been sixty-five involuntary commitments with twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four miles driven, three hundred and twenty-one hours of transport, and, uh, the transport company that we use has taken care of all of them, so it's eliminated us being on the road that many hours, that many miles. A new body scanner been purchased on a grant from the legislature. Radiation training has been completed, and all required permits have been issued, and the scanner is now in use. The new camera system is up and running and performing very well. The control panel is outdated and is gonna have to be replaced at some point. It's, it's a life safety issue, just. The kitchen contractor has hired an additional employee. They now have three Kimball kitchen employees in the kitchen. We've had several applicants for detention. Unfortunately, only two of those have been able to be hired. The remainder would never return calls or show up for the psychological evaluation. Somehow felony convictions on, on their criminal records, which eliminates them. And the last thing I'll talk about is, we've had one detention officer pass away during this period. His name is Jamie Art. He passed away on February the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. He was the husband of our jail captain, Leanne Art. Any question?
We got any? I appreciate the report. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, sure. We'll have to go back and study all this. We'll have to do some studying. Are there any pictures in there? Yeah, that's what I'll move on. Come on, look, Mr. Jason. Inspection.
How are you? Swain County inspections for. I've got that little report here that Gina helped me pop up here. We've done, issued five hundred and nineteen permits from July to March thirty-first, and we've generated ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, total number of residential building permits is fifty-four, and overnight rentals that were constructed were thirty-one. We've done that by just pulling it off the websites, ones that's being advertised and stuff like that, just doing a little investigation. And, uh, homes constructed for sale was seven. Uh, total number of resident, other word, local people, was twelve. So another little breakdown is, we've done six hundred and thirty-eight inspections, just building inspections, two hundred and fifty-six electrical inspections, and change outs is three hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and ninety-four plumbing inspections, a hundred and ten manufactured homes. That includes remodels of manufactured homes, new ones, all that. We didn't break them down any further than that. Um, seventeen fire inspections, six, uh, ABC inspections, and total square footage was a hundred and two thousand and some change. Uh, commercial square footage was twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty, and just by what they listed on their applications, we've looked at fifteen million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars worth of value that they put on their thing. Not us suggesting or looking at it. That's what they put down. So we collected a hundred thousand roughly of that fifteen million, so. And that's short and sweet of it. It's just me and Gina, and, uh, we do all right. We got, what, twenty new permits in the last week? Yeah, so it's picking back up. It slowed down, and it, it comes in waves. And, uh, any other questions you need?
Any questions?
Or sweet?
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
All right.
You'll be right back up here, brother.
Oh, yeah.
Inspection. Inspection fees.
So, talking about revenue and stuff like that, so we wanted to try to offset what the county had to give to us for contract services because we got the school coming up and kind of feel like that, for one, my level's not high enough currently to do the school, so we'd have to contract with somebody to do that. I'm working on getting them leveled up. It takes a couple years as you go between levels. Um, so we went ahead and just threw an idea together there, just something more or less for youngs to look at. We got a couple other counties. And some of the other counties, they'll, they'll show a lot less rate, or they'll do it like this one right here for Haywood is a good example. So they do three seventy-five for a base fee. So even if you come in with a five hundred square foot home, you're automatically gonna pay three seventy-five, whereas we would put it in our system, generate the fees, and then they do an additional thirty-five cents once it goes over a thousand square feet. And the more I got to looking at it, there's other hidden fees I'd have to go through and compile more of them, like processing fee, like Jackson County charges a two hundred dollar processing fee per application, right off the bat. So you're gonna get charged with that two hundred dollars when you walk in the door, just to process your application, and that's something we don't do. We, we just figure the, the permits, do the review and all that. And if they come and pull the permit, if they come pick it up, sign for it, then they pay for it then. But if they don't ever pick it up, then we just generated that document with no money. So I guess some of the other counties have decided we're gonna get paid for our time, even if you don't come back. So that was one reason, and just trying to help, you know, money's tight, and we're trying to help before we can. So just something for youngs to review and go over. And any questions, you're more than welcome to get ahold of me.
Questions on that? I think, um, I think, uh, on the back of this page, it says, two thousand eighteen, is that the last time we kind of?
Yeah, that's the last time we adjusted it, and it's.
I think it was, yeah. And I remember when.
And currently, and this is something else that we've been looking at. Currently, we do the same thing residential as we do for commercial, and it's fifty cents per square foot. And a lot of times, your larger commercial ones kind of make up the difference there on their square footage. So, like I said, this is just something we're just trying to put out there, and we've got some new, like, we got some cell phone towers and stuff like that we've added in here. Like a communication tower base rate is a thousand dollars. In Macon County, it's twenty-six hundred dollars for them to pull that, just for them to review it and to get everything started. And we did put in something that we're allowed to charge for is fire inspections for, like, where we do them in the town and stuff, where we can charge that seventy-five dollars for that each time we go out there. That's something that's on there that's new. And we do consultation visits. We, it shows a hundred dollars. It was very rare. Unless we've had to be out there five or six times, we're not gonna charge for, to go out and talk to somebody. But if we've been out there five or six times and having to go over the same thing with them each every time, then you got to recuperate, you gotta have some way to kind of, and it's more or less to kind of sway them from doing those consultation visits so many times. It's a, you know, we're approaching a place where we might have to charge a fee, but that's not something we do every time we go out and do fees or do an assessment. Any questions?
Need anybody else? Jason, I appreciate it.
Alfred?
The next step is personnel committee.
These are the, uh, personnel committee recommendations. We've been asking these back and forth for a couple of years now. The first one is, uh, personnel committee would like to see the minimum start rate to be moved to fifteen dollars an hour across the board and for any county employee. There's, uh, there's ten county employees that make less than fifteen dollars an hour or thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars a year. We'd like to see that the county's minimum pay be fifteen dollars an hour. And number two is, the personnel committee would like to see the full pay study implemented as it was presented last year. Uh, personnel committee would like to, like the Board of Commissioners to consider adding a service fee to property parcels. This fee would help cover the cost of emergency services such as nine-one-one communications, fire, rescue, and law enforcement. Not sure what that would be, but. And the last one, the personnel committee would like to have a inclement weather and emergency closing policy added to the personnel policy. This would, uh, each employee would be granted sixteen hours of leave each year for inclement weather disasters, or any time that they feel it's not safe to travel back and forth to work, or, or it's not safe at work, such as the hurricanes and snowstorms, whatever it may be. That would be sixteen hours of extra leave per year, just to be used for, uh, for that. And it carries over if, if it's not used, and it goes into whatever sick time that, uh, you have occurred. And that's, uh, that's it.
We got questions on any of these?
Would the sixteen hours be, uh, aid leave?
It would, it would be paid leave, yes. Per employee. I think the reason for that is, uh, some employees feel that they can't afford to take off during the snow if the county's not closed. And if they do close, then they don't have, they can use time to, so they don't lose their pay for that day.
I believe in the past, we've kind of struggled with making that decision on closing the county because you have services that can't close, like EMS.
Right.
You know, so they can't close.
Of course, we don't close, but, and if one employee has a more snow on the head of a lark than we do here, then, then they can call their supervisor and say, look, I'm, I'm not, I don't feel safe coming to work, so I'm gonna use my, my, one of my snow days or inclement weather days.
The six custodians and four solid waste employees making less than, than the fifteen dollars an hour.
We have a CDL truck driver at solid waste that makes less than fifteen dollars an hour.
We could take this sixteen hours added a year. Instead of giving it that sixteen hours, we could move that pay up here to those making less than fifteen dollars an hour, and we could get them up to fifteen dollars an hour. Thanks, so Lottie?
The thing, i- it's just two different things. So for vacation leave, it is added on, not everybody uses it per se. So it's not, I mean, we have to carry it like in the audit to show that we have balances for people, and if everybody was to leave, this as well would be due to pay out if everybody left at the same time. But most people just carry that time, you know, use it for normal vacations. So there's not really a way to equal it to a dollar amount because you don't, aren't always paying that out.
But what I'm saying is, is we're wanting to add sixteen, sixteen more hours to it.
Mm-hmm.
That was the proposal, and, and that. How far below fifteen dollars a hour does other people make?
There, most of them are a little up between twelve and thirteen fifty.
So now, how do we need to figure out how we can get them to fifteen?
Well, if, if I'm not mistaken, used to, we used to have something called the petty hours. There was sixteen hours a year.
Eight.
Eight, eight hours a year. So, I mean, that would be kind of like what the sixteen hours would be.
And we still get, petty's kind of done the same way. It's put on at the beginning of the year, just like this is proposed. You would get sixteen hours at the beginning of the year to use. So, you know, like, if you're not coming in, you would have that time to use. But then if you're not, if you're an employee that's working during that inclement weather time, it's fair across the board for everyone because you can accrue that and roll it into sick time, which counts towards retirement, early.
But that, would, would, would that not be like adding two working shields of vacation pay? You, you, I mean, when you narrow it down to the words we're talking, that's adding two more days of vacation, huh?
Yeah.
Instead of doing that, we ought to use that to get these other people up to a living wage. Would make more sense to me.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Nothing other than they've recommended doing both.
No, we're not making a decision tonight.
No, no. It's a budgetary time.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it would be looking at July four.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Hard work. Thank you, Jason. Next, Ms. Ellen Snodgrass, Mariana, library updates.
So basically, we're still working to get the bid down. Um, it's still an issue with the schedules of the contractor, the architect, the subs, everybody's in Asheville. Still a problem. Uh, we, um, have managed to get it down from five point six million to five point four um, with changes that I had mentioned, or I think in January that we were doing regarding brick to concrete and some other, some other items like that. Um, I believe we can get another couple, close to another couple hundred thousand with some other changes. Um, I believe we can get another couple, close to another couple hundred thousand with some other changes that we're being worked on, reducing the size of the regional office space and some other floor plan changes that we have in the works right now. Still not where we want it. That, if that got us to five point two or construction costs, we're still looking at a total budget of seven million. We have six point two raised, which is wonderful, but not enough. So, um, we got the request from you all for, um, to see if there was anything that y'all could do. And I think we sent some, Bobby, we sent you some information and Lottie also some information. So, you know, we could probably talk about that at some point. But I would, I would like to ask if we could have a meeting, if Lottie, our team, one or two of y'all with the contractor and the architect, because this is very frustrating. We're, we know we're probably looking at price increases due to just the economy situation. And, um, you know, we're, it's time to have a meeting like that. So I would like to, to do that, if that can work with Lottie on that, if that makes sense to y'all. It's just been going on too long. But we haven't let that stop us from doing other things. So, um, Kim Carpenter has vetted the contract that was sent and has provided a few questions for discussion with, with Lottie. We continue to work, uh, doing what we can. Cleaning, clearing the site is one thing, and you may have seen in the paper that we moved a tree that was a historically significant tree, uh, that needed to be protected and found a nice home for it at Darnell Farms on, in their, their, you know, they're doing that land conservation trust. And, um, so, um, we hired an arborist to make sure that everything went well. And if you saw in the paper, the, the shovels were disinfected and it was all done by hand. And, uh, it, it might be the only known, uh, Franklin tree, uh, west of Asheville. I know Western had one that died last year, so they're very rare. So it had to, it had to leave our property, but we're happy that it's found a home. And they did, um, pull a few seedlings from it, so they're hoping to see if maybe they can grow something from that. Also, near the front entrance, uh, kind of tucked up against the building, uh, is a sort of a park model type shed, which was the, um, Friends of the Library, uh, used bookstore until they, before they moved to, uh, Everett Street. So that, that is their, was their thing. And, um, they have found a buyer, it's been cleaned out, they found a buyer, and it should be pulled out of there in, probably about next week, maybe. So a few things going on, on the property at any rate. We have, uh, been working hard and gotten a quote from a furniture and storage company for packing, moving, and storage, the books, other materials and furniture when we're doing the renovation. And basically, everything, almost everything in the building has to go somewhere. This quote was ninety thousand dollars. We think we can probably do the packing, but the furniture is a problem. We need about three thousand square foot of storage, um, for pallets of books and other materials and, um, the furniture. We'd like to see if we can find a less expensive option. So if, if there are any ideas from y'all that would be very, very grateful for. We also have gotten a quote from a Varkata Security Systems. They do a good bit of work in the county, I think, I believe, the school system, the fire department, among others. Uh, we have no, uh, security system at the library currently. We're talking about exterior cameras, um, and remote access key deck. You know, we have, somebody wants to do an after-hours program, here's the key. You know, so we would like to, um, provide some security, uh, if, if we can do that. Again, ninety five thousand dollars, um, quote, that's our quote from them. Uh, we've met with them three or four times, and as I said, they do a lot of work in the county. Both of those two items would come from the federal money that was secured last year. So we have those as part of, uh, they can fit into that FFNE that we developed, um, because that is a reimbursement. So we tried to put it as last in to the project. So that is what we've been working on. I have a few, um, samples of our local contribution drive brochure. Just brought some for y'all, um, just printed a few just to, to give out. And, um, we have set a goal of five hundred thousand dollars for that drive. And, uh, that also, of course, means more grants need to come into play. We're, uh, working on a grant this week, actually, be about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant, fingers crossed. Any questions?
Is any of these grants that we, that you guys have, are they time-sensitive or are they EM'd or?
We, we did, uh. We planned to apply for a grant last year, but it was more of a programmatic type grant. And it would be more, something you would do more when you were closer to the end because it, it required results. So many people came, you know, in that sort of thing. And we can't do that if we're not completely open. So we've had to put off some of the more sort of time-sensitive grants like that. But everything that we've gotten so far has been, um, construction. The, the cannon, the dogwood to help us write grants, and then the other dogwood, the bigger things that we have gotten.
And how much, how much money did you say that we needed?
Well, it depends. Right now, we've raised six point two million. The project, I'm saying it probably wouldn't, wouldn't be less. It, it's somewhere in the seven, seven million dollar range. That's if we can get them down to five point two on the construction. Uh, otherwise, we may be wondering what can we do for certain, such amount of money, so.
Anybody got any questions from sale?
I just think it's something that we need to continue to try to get as best as we can. It's, you know, with our community, still being as, uh, not fully up to date with technology, with internet and things like that. I know there's still kids that are using the computers there.
Oh, yeah.
For school work and things like that, so.
Yep.
You know, we need to get this going so that way it can be fully used.
Great.
So let's give it a go.
Yes, I will.
And we'll, we'll set up some kind of meeting time.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Mr. Henry Chambers, but I won't, I've talked to Henry, and he was just kind of coming for informational purposes. Anybody had any questions, so, um, and you can talk to him afterwards if you want to as well, or give him a call. Meet up with him, have a cup of coffee, that are up to me. So I appreciate all the information that you've sent us so far.
Yes, thanks.
Next up is the Reval Contract.
So in the packet is a copy of the Reval Contract. So it does have to start this year, just so that they have time to get everything done, to have it ready and set on the books for twenty twenty eight. Every contract for a reval of full list and measure, like April was saying, is a per parcel. So ours right now is forty three dollars per parcel, based on, based on the estimated count of twelve thousand six hundred and twenty eight parcels. So the full contract price, price would be five hundred and forty three thousand to get that full list and measure completed for the reevaluation for twenty twenty eight.
When do we have to know this by or have this by?
The sooner the better, just because this was about one of the only companies that we could find that would actually even quote and talk to us, that could actually fit us in their schedule to, to have it done by twenty eight. Some people just said no completely and that they weren't even considering it. And then the others just, it's a commodity essentially. The sooner the better for them, because he did say that they would start, the plan would be to start this summer, like July, August. And we won't have to have, it will not be, it's their full staff. Like, our staff will be doing minimal work with them. It won't be anything that our staff's having to pick up and take on as well.
Is this on payment, about a one-time payment?
No, it would be over the course.
Over the course.
Uh-huh, of the, um, a year and a half.
So some of it won't come out, we done it now. Some of it would come out on next year's budget, some of it would come out following your budget.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it would not be one chunk at a time.
Anybody else got any questions on that? This is one of them stake mandated mandatory. Thanks.
Just had to do that one every four years?
Every eight years. So this is the full list and measure. We did not do that the last time.
How many years ago was it that we done the last one?
This, it'll be twenty twenty was the full one, but we did the other one, um, just a couple of years ago, the day, what we call a desk. But this is like where they're actually out in the field, looking at things, actually seeing them, putting their eyes on them.
Anybody else got any questions on that?
I think that whenever we do, whatever, if it's this or, you know, another contract, we need to make sure that our community members know that they're going to be, people are out there. You know, it's not somebody's trying to scam them that they're, they're doing that, because we know some people might.
That happened the last time we had.
Scammed anyway.
That's true. That's true.
You're right.
I just don't want nobody to end up with bullet holes.
Next up, the County Manager's Report.
I don't have anything right now.
Mistress Report. Bella, I've got just, you know, we're working on some projects, trying to get them finished up. Uh, animal shelters coming along pretty good. Uh, the house is almost finished. Get it finished, and we'll pick up the pace on animal shelter. That all I've got.
I went to a district soil and water, uh, conservation meeting between all the western end of the state. It was held at the, the WNC livestock center. And of course, they had used that center for storage for hurricane relief and, and different things. Of course, there's, uh, there's still monies available through soil and water if you live next to a stream or on a stream and need to clean up debris from storm damage. And any small farms or whatever through the Soil and Water Conservation District, any kind of grass seeding or anything like that, they can help out with the cost of those things through cost share. Then I was supposed to have attended, uh, the DOT TAC meeting in Silver, and I missed it due to illness. Sorry. I hate being sick, but anyway, I've been sick back this, pretty tough. But, uh, other than that, that's all that I have. I don't know if via, we didn't have a meeting yet.
We're not, they scheduled some of the coming out.
Yeah. Anyway, other than that, that's, that's all I've got.
Well, we've had, I've had several different meetings. Tanner and I attended the, uh, opening of the senior games this morning. That'll get a little turnout, which was, I thought was pretty cool. So we do have senior games, so if you're fifteen and up.
Fifty five.
Fifty five?
Yes.
You sure? I thought it says a big. That was fixed the joke. It's fifty five and up, you can, it, it, you can register for senior games. It's a statewide senior games and access national. So you can end up going to state, you can end up going to the national level. Tanner might know a little bit more about it now, but, so we went to go ahead and tell him about that thing.
Yeah, so, uh, registration's actually closed, but you can still participate. So you can't meddle or anything like that in it. But if you want to go and participate, like this morning, they had, uh, football toss, softball toss, uh, basketball shot, you know, all, all of that. And there's other games that are going to be played this month, so it's all the way throughout April. So pickleball is one, um, shot put, or not shot put, shuffleboard, um, is another one. And so, uh, there's just different games that, that are really cool. And, and like Kevin said, you can, uh, this year is just a state, um, one, so you can qualify for state. But there are years that you can qualify and go to nationals and compete against all these other people from around the US. And it, it's really, really neat. And if, if you want to know more, the rec park can, can help you with, with that. So it, it's really a neat program for, um, for our wiser adults of our community. So, um, it's really, really neat, so.
Anything else on that?
Uh, the only other meeting I attended was the Four Square. And if you don't know about Four Square, they are, uh, a agency that is over Head Start, HUD, helping, Healthy Opportunities, uh, program, a bunch of different programs that helps our, our, uh, people who are in need in our, our communities, um, as well as our young, uh, kids in, in Head Start to get a, a good start on school. Um, and so, uh, we meet every other month to, in Andrews, um, just to kind of go over their pro, programs and where they're at. And so, um, it's a, it's a great thing. If you guys, if anybody knows of anybody who needs help, they do a program called Weatherization. So if a, any, uh, folks need help with like new roofs or anything like that caused by, uh, wind damage or anything, you can get in contact with them. We do have a local office at the, um, old court, or at the courthouse building, and, uh, they can help you apply for that. And we, we, as a county, we use very little of their funds. And Roger would say that all the time, but out of the four counties, which is Clay, Cherokee, Graham, and Swain, Swain uses the la, least amount of funds of that, of those programs. And so I would like to see us be able to use more of that, um, for, for our kids, for our adults, and for our senior citizens too as well, because that, tho, those are great programs, um, that, that they have there. So, um, I, I, I encourage you guys to check them out if you haven't checked them out, but that's all my report.
Ms. Chair, I have one more thing. I did attend the Alarka Fire Debriefing on Saturday evening. I just want to say hats off to our community volunteers, our fire folks, uh, rescue squad was involved. All of our county agencies tried to help out with, with that, uh, unfortunate, uh, event that got started at a, at a residence there. And, uh, the wind just took off, terrible conditions. And, you know, I can't say enough about people who get out and risk their lives trying to save property and, and acreage from burning. Even though with the right conditions, burning acreage is not a bad thing. It helps the environment, but, and gets rid of the fuel. But, uh, under those circumstances, it's been a real mess. Sheriff's offices have been there, you know, everybody, the whole county worked as a team with that event. And, uh, the, the North Carolina Forest Service guys were doing all they could do. And, you know, my, my, my other deal about that is, and I wish people could get it through, um, our heads when the state calls for a burning ban, that means no fire. So, so a lot of people had a fire ring going, whatever, but they were asked to, to extinguish their fires and put them out because it's real dangerous times, uh, and always is every spring. We always have a dry time, all of the year's a bad time too. That a bit, uh, you know, and I'm thankful for the rain, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, most definitely.
The good Lord knows how to extinguish fire better than I do. But, uh, all the people involved, uh, with that just done a terrific job. I felt like it was great.
Yeah, I think it was a great thing, and they should be commended for the work that they did.
I said, but, yeah, I think they did a great job. Logging on, kept up with the EM Director, she's kind of, yeah, point leading a lot of this. They have an incident command. Uh, they have an incident command, uh, these fires, luckily don't know about that, but it's not, it's not, there's something everybody is gonna do.
And they explained things at that meeting that I didn't understand either, you know, but uh, but the thing about their data, about the fire itself, and the public gets frustrated because they don't know any information. Well, you can only release the information that is accurate.
Yep.
So these officials who came in and managed this incident, they would have to get their data. They send it to Montana, because that's where in, in the United States that you register those things, these types of fire events. And then, but that was when they brought that great team in. You have to understand too, North Carolina Forest Service had their hands full with Pope County. Down east, there was fires, it wasn't just here in Swain County, it was all over North Carolina. So they were spread thin. They brought this group in, a national group that fights fires. And that's what they do and manage these events that happen. And they're the ones who were able to get the belly scoop planes and drop water, you know? And they've done a phenomenal job with, with all of that. But uh, uh, I guess I stopped rambling about that.
No, it's not me.
But uh, it's, uh, the data that they get has to go there and be approved before they can legally release it to the public. So the numbers that you were hearing were actually twenty-four hours behind. They were making progress with the fire, being able to contain it way before you got word on what containment number that they had at the time. So the numbers were sort of skewed, but you know, uh, the main thing is we were able to help of people who were evacuated and, and find those folks a place to stay. And uh, uh, it, it just all worked out together. And of course, you know, you hate any, anytime to ask people to leave their home, but when it's necessary, it's necessary. And they don't do it without thinking all of this stuff through.
Yeah, it's, it's very well.
It's not just a spur of the moment decision.
It's like, yeah, when they come in, it's like, this is second nature for them, but they're not just out there trying to figure out what to do. They've got it figured out. They just got to implement what they figured out. So it's pretty neat to watch this stuff.
Yeah, I'm very thankful and, you know, they were able pretty much to save the structure that the fire started from.
Yeah.
So.
And you know, everybody pulled together, everybody, the community got together. And I, I seen that they was kinda saying, we don't need no more donations, because everybody was sending donations. But that, that's a great thing, that's a good thing. Anyway, I've talked to several of our, but I called and talked to a couple, making them make sure they had enough water enough, cause we could get it to them and stuff. And they said, no, everybody in the community is really thankful, the fire department's really thankful. Yes. Community coming together and uh, getting this thing put out. Said, we're all working together good, we can go back to fighting when we get done. But uh, in saying that though, it was uh, it, it, I think it went really well. So I mean, we've had two back to back. We've had floods and we've had fires and seen some more rain coming. So we don't know what the worst is, so appreciate everybody that gathered together and helped on that fire. Informal discussion.
Department budget report.
Yes, I got that wrote down down here.
Mr. Chairman, I like that. I know they're, they're, they're pushing for the firefight, they firefight. Why don't we put that on the ballot? Like, not to people of the county, like that for mine, would we uh?
They can't, they can't hear you, Dave.
About to pay firefighters? Let's put it on the ballot next election. Let the people of the county decide.
Uh, next election would be not this.
Right, twenty-six.
Twenty-two six.
What about the land at the high school? We have to figure out if we could.
Nobody ever got back to me on that.
I would like to see that back out in the tax base.
Can you talk to Kim about that? I think I've talked to her once.
The, the.
The parcel land, the county almost behind.
And then we're gonna lose our bud every time. And we can get a quarter of what we give her in fact. We can get it back in the tax base.
I agree.
I had some inquiries about the Alarka school playground up there, the, at the fire department. It's, it looked like a dinosaur sitting out there. I believe it was nineteen eighty, somewhere along in there, they got the equipment from the school up here to, and put it up there. So it's kinda due time that that's taken care of, replace it, uh, get a grant or whatever we have to do to replace it. There are a lot of kids use that playground.
Yeah.
And uh, we need to think about getting that replaced.
Yeah, that's still the metal one up there.
It is, they painted it one time.
Yeah, it's still, get up there on July fourth at two o'clock in the afternoon, it's hot.
Yeah, they probably painted over lead paint.
Yeah.
This part of, this part of, is that part of?
It, it can't be, but I'm gonna reach out to Southwestern Commission and ask them if they'll look for some grants.
Cause that should become a, a part of grants.
And along with that, I've had some calls about the playground at the pool um, over the weekend. You know, that, that playground's twenty-some years old now. Um, and there's been some bolts sticking up and some things fraying and things. So that might, that's another playground we need to have, I, I believe, looked at too as well.
That was put in, that was one of the requests for next year's.
For next year's, awesome. So, yeah, I think that's something that we need to, to have changed too. Plus it's, from my understanding, it's also failed inspection three years in a row. So um, probably needs to be
Time.
Time to change.
That's another thing too, we need to get operable is the cameras up there.
At the rec park?
Yeah.
Well, down at the pool house, it, all the wires is pulled, I guess, all they need to do is put the cameras in.
And Taylor did share with me Monday, she has called Splash Tacular, the slide is peeling. The paint is peeling on the slide that's set up there and not been used yet. So I'm waiting to get more information from her about how they're going to fix this now that it's in place. So just keep that in mind if you hear that or see people up there.
But that is the company that actually fixed it the first time.
Yep.
We were about to do that, we sent it back.
We did.
They sent it back.
We sent it back one time, redo it. May have to do it again. It may be something that they can do on site.
I've not looked, I'm gonna go over and look at, I'm gonna see what it looks like. Uh, so next budget, you guys looked at?
Registering.
Registering.
Went pretty well. Um, state pretty much mandates exactly what their, their job is and how they do that. Certain uh, uh, part of their budget um, has to be done according to state standards. All in all, it was a pretty good meeting. Couldn't find any waste, come out anything.
Like.
Going on copier, maybe contract that might be renewed or, or done away with, wasn't that one thing? I think that was basically it.
They need more space, everybody needs more space.
They need more space.
They know where to get it.
We're here again.
Mr. Chairman, did you hear anything back from the fire service?
I've not.
I haven't heard anything either.
I don't think.
Well, they still got a, a interim superintendent.
What about you guys, you, with soil water?
Yeah, Soil and Water is who we had, Creedon does a great job. It's just her and Shelby. Um, you know, they, they do a lot of educational things as well as um, you know, helping our, our local people out. And we kinda got some understanding of, you know, farms and different things that, wh- what they do help and kinda get a better understanding of that. Um, but there, there was one thing that she was gonna look into contracted services, I think, was something, it was um, over budget. So um, she was gonna look into that and get back with us about, about that. Um, but you know, they have the, the education trailer and different things. I think that what they needed was a, a, a truck to be able to pull it. So um, and their truck is getting, you know, it's, it's old, but it's also a smaller truck, not be able to pull a heavy trailer like that. So um, that, I think, David, did you wanna add anything to that?
I'd say they needed a truck to pull in trailers of a one fifty.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty heavy, that, that trailer's pretty heavy.
Where all do they travel with that trailer?
She said they went Plumb and Raleigh, didn't she?
I think so, I thought they'd go, uh, at least.
Yeah, they go to festivals, they do the Ag Fair, the schools, different things like that. Yeah, state fair, yep.
Western Carolina. I think she said she would even be satisfied if we could get her a, a good use on that, you know?
Well, they need something reliable.
Yeah.
When they're pulling that trailer. Cause it's a, it's a hazard if you're pulling that trailer with small truck, it's not,
Yeah.
you know, weighted for that trailer.
A- and their, their budget too, I know their salaries are not all covered by us. They're also covered by USDA. So we don't cover everything, but we cover, I think, half, half of it, so. But that's all we could, that's all we had.
Lottie and I met with the, the Lexus department today and it went really well. It's pretty much cut and dry, a lot of their stuff is. Um, I don't know of any big issues except for getting them out of that building and putting them somewhere else. They wanna move. And we, we've talked about this for several years, trying to figure out where to put them. We've not really come up with a really good place yet. We're brainstorming.
The biggest deal out there is the parking, I mean.
That's the problem down there, is that the parking was bad.
If they had the parking, we could move the, open it up back there then, uh, put more offices in there. We talked about it one time, but the parking's still an issue.
Parking's pretty rough, I went down there when their boat was really heavy and there's people parked all over the place now. It's like middle of the road, it's, is that where? But it went, went really well, so. So for, how many, how many parks have we, have we done, you know?
Um, we've done all but two.
All but two.
One more page.
And I really appreciate Lottie doing this, this is, this is a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of extra time trying to figure out in these budgets. And uh, I think she's went through them thoroughly. And I actually found things that might've been doubled up or things that might've been budgeted but not really used. Uh, so there is some savings going on. Appreciate that, appreciate all the work you've been doing.
It's been good for us too, to get to know department heads and, and get to speak to them and
Yeah.
know who, who we're working with. I know Lottie's are technically our only employee, but I mean, we got two hundred and twenty employees who work for us, who do a great job through our county. So it's been good to get to know them too as well.
And we have a department head meeting coming up soon as well. Bobby and Tanner will be it. Meet all, meet everybody, you pretty much know them all, but. So what's the other two?
Administration and finance. So the other, there is a third department left, which is emergency management. Um, which is fire marshal and the maintenance people that we had originally budgeted for. But our fire marshal's just part-time. So I figured we could have that emergency management discussion at one of our budget meetings. Just have that discussion all five together, since there's not really a department head per se exactly for that. And then the last um, thing to tackle is special appropriations. So we're having the meeting with the school specific, but there are other special appropriations that requests come in for. So I figured we would tackle those as well as a group during a budget meeting.
Yeah. So that next budget meeting is next Tuesday, right?
Yes.
At five thirty.
That's the one, the joint one with the school.
That's the one with the school, we moved it, Bob.
Yes.
I knew we moved it, I couldn't remember what we moved it. And that would be with the school to look at what they're needing or asking for.
Yes.
So who wants admin, who wants finance?
They'll do it to make that energy peak instead. Finance. We're like finance.
We'll take admin.
You know, we'll probably do eight thirty like we've been doing.
Any more informal discuss? Uh, I had some ones, but I can't remember what. All right, next up is public comment. Aiden Rose, public comment. When you come up, please state your name and your address, you have five minutes to speak, no more. Cindy, we'll keep the clock back here.
See.
Hold on a second. Uh, you'll be addressing the board as a whole and not any individual, whether on the board or on, in the audience. This board will not make any comments or answer any questions at this time. This is your time of public comment to address your concerns. No time shall be shared, each individual have their own time. Please stop yourself, that may have, making me stop, me stop people. All right, Tammy, go ahead.
Thank you. I speak for the youth center committee that was formed two years ago by our county manager and chairman, Kevin Siegel. Our committee was formed to study the need for a youth center and what it should provide. Establishing a Swain County youth center was a goal set by Commissioner Kevin Siegel when he was elected. It has been eighteen months since our youth center committee made our presentation to you. And we came back today to review and restate our plea. The presentation included the study of factors affecting our youth in Swain County. It included the results of a survey taken by youth, our parents and our community at large. We learned that drug abuse, teen pregnancy, child abuse, poverty and a safe place to hang out were the highest negative factors impacting our youth. We learned that having a youth center was extremely important to our community. Students want a safe place to be with their friends, they also want to volunteer in the community. They want self-improvement, they wanna learn new skills, they want college readiness, they want money management, homework help and much more. Far too many young people in Swain County face overwhelming challenges in their homes. They significantly impact their futures. Poverty, lack of access to healthcare, limited educational opportunities, economic instability and disengaged communities prevent our youth from realizing their full potential. As a county, we need to focus our goals to providing programs that address and support our youth and young adults. Activities that no longer exist in Bryson City are bowling alleys, movie theater, pool room, game rooms. We have a senior center, we have an animal shelter, but we do not have a youth center. We don't have a place for our kids to go. What kind of message does it give to our young people? Sadly, Swain County maintains the ninety-six health ranking in the state. Particularly in mental health services, causing our young adults to failure to, to thrive. When schools lack the resources to offer the comprehensive education required to compete in today's world, futures can look bleak. In twenty twenty-four, our Swain schools showed that seventy-five, seventy-five percent of our students did not earn the reading scores necessary to prepare them for high school. I can repeat that, but you should have these in front of you. Seventy-five percent of our students did not earn the reading scores to prepare them for high school. Seventy-one percent did not earn the math scores to prepare them for high school. A new figure since we saw you last, in twenty twenty-three, forty-two percent, forty-two percent of our youth were chronically absent from school in twenty twenty-three. Lack of community engagement and mentorship leaves our vulnerable youth to navigate hardships alone. Children growing up in struggling households face challenges that affect their future health and well-being. Without adequate support from our community, they will encounter barriers to education, employment and society that hinder their ability to reach their full potential and contribute to their community. Without intervention, these young people risk higher rates of dropping out of school, substance abuse, mental health issues, lowering their potential to survive. And that's where our youth center comes in. As stated by the Nantahala Health Foundation, and it's a very important statement here. Investing in youth support programs is far more cost-effective than dealing with the long-term consequences. Neglecting these children and young adults is not just a Neglecting these children and young adults is not just a moral failure. It's an economic and social challenge with profound and lasting repercussions. I'll read that again. Annabelle, you have it in front of you. Investing in youth support programs is far more cost effective than dealing with the long-term consequences. Neglecting these children and young adults is just, not just a moral failure. It's an economic and social challenge with profound and lasting repercussions. As we progressed, requested eighteen months ago, we asked that you please appoint a small board of committed adults with a teen advisory board, all having been selected after a conscientious means of approval. And we ask that committees be created to study building design, location, programs, activities, financial planning, and funding. And I'm sorry that I'm, Tanner and I are the only ones here from our committee, four or six, I'm sorry, four out of town and one is sick. And we thank you and we look forward to your response. Thank you.
Mr. Ed, promotion?
I'm gonna kick the bucket a little bit. Uh, first, uh, we know the Army Corps of Engineers did a wonderful job cleaning up the island park. They're fixing it. They went to Transylvania County and then they want to come back and the islands between my park and Bear Hunter Campground, they want to clean that up. Let's go back to the island park. We need to find a way in the town to utilize possibly the sheriff's department and deputy. We need a foot patrol to patrol the areas where they see a car coming and they disperse. The vandalism, the the petty crimes that are happening don't look good for our community. Okay? You know, it went, you know, in this, in the tourist business, you know, everybody promotes the island park for a dog park. You know, but you have people afraid to bring their children there and walk their dogs because of the needles in there and it's been cleaned up. So maybe we can find time where we can get one of the deputies in a sign where we have a at night, because that seems to be the problem where they jump over the fence and they go in there and they shoot their drugs up and throw their needles down. And I've policed my place. I don't have that problem. Okay? At all. You know, it's just time where we need a little, you know, like the youth center is a good, is is an excellent thing. Most cities have them. We're lacking, but a foot patrol. You know, the police department doesn't have enough manpower. Sheriff's Department can find a able-bodied person. Maybe we might want to consider a foot patrol. I mean, uh, that's the only way you're going to stop things. You're gonna, you know, the Joe Bailey House is a good example. Breaking into other places that just break into random ways. They don't care. Okay? They don't care. They're not being punished. We need to be a little more aggressive. Okay? We need to be aggressive. I've been here almost forty years and I've watched this town grow exponentially. I mean, it had nothing when I moved here and my comment was it did everything. We spent forty years creating what we have now and we're seeing it dismantled slowly. And we're not going to put the blame on the locals or the, we we have a problem that needs to be addressed. And it needs to be addressed before it becomes a big problem. Facebook will kill us. And and it's to a point where, you know, tourists are noticing. Okay? We need to do something. And be a little more aggressive. You know, and maybe we want to actually just step back on somebody else's comment. Maybe we need a fireman's day. A real fireman's day where we celebrate those people that go out there and risk their lives. You know, make it an event. Summertime is full and we need, we need things to, you know, events for children to be proud of. You know, the firemen, you know, it used to be the only time you saw the fire, fire trucks was at the Christmas parade. Throwing candy. Well, we need a fireman's day maybe. But we need a foot patrol for parts of the city and the island park and places where they're throwing the needles down. A foot patrol will stop it, run it off, and be a little more aggressive. We can't keep looking the other way and think somebody else is going to fix the problem. They're not fixing, nobody's fixing the problem. Okay? And, um, that's about all I have to say. And the bucket's full of a lot of stuff that needs to be thought about. Simple things. We're a simple community, you know? And that's what makes the place so great for families to come and move here, to raise your children. That's what I did. Raised my children, now my grandchildren. I'm not giving up the battle to keep the place. But it's not my responsibility. We have, I think we have a, you know, we can ask the sheriff's possibly to find us a foot patrol. It would do a lot more better than driving through and they hide around the corner and the car's gone and back to business as normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Julia Richards.
Hello, good evening. Um, I am here in support of the paid firefighters. Uh, this past Alarka five fire is the second fire that the Alarka Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department has prevented the fire from hitting our house. And, um, I was at that meeting on Saturday night and also gave my thanks then. I'm not asking you to do anything. Um, since I just found out I cannot ask you questions. I'm going to rephrase my questions as my understanding of statements, and I will follow later to make sure that I'm stating it the right way. Just have two. Based on the discussions I've heard tonight, that there will be a, uh, question on the two thousand and twenty-six election ballot about paid uh, firefighters. And my second understanding is that, um, at some opportunity, we will be able to participate in the wording of that ballot question so that it is very clear and understandable, because they're not always clear and understandable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Courtney Neil.
Hello, and thank you for being here. I wanted to address head on the, um, issue that I have with Lottie just unilaterally being hired. It's nothing personal, Lottie. I have no issue with that. I have an issue with, in December, we were told by the members of this board, at that time, you weren't here and you weren't here. We were told that you would consider all applicants for our county manager. You gave us your word at this meeting as our elected official that you would do that, and you did not. Kevin gave me that information standing right outside this hallway at the March fourth meeting when he angrily told me that it was an appointed position and they appointed Lottie to pass their budget. Lottie, that would be offensive to me personally as a woman. If I were in your position, how dare you think you can manipulate me? With that being said, as a constituent and a taxpayer in Swain County, I'm tired of watching deputies leaving their cars running all the time. Okay, we pay them for that gas. We're looking at ways to tighten up the budget. The driving through too fast through town. I get responding to an emergency in a timely manner, but endangering pedestrians and business owners is not okay. You're endangering other people's safety. So we need to address the driving too fast in town. That ties into insurance on the sheriff's department. Rumors are bounding about wrecks and accidents with sher- sheriff's deputies to the point that our insurance isn't covering those and those are coming from the general fund now, um, asking if that information is accurate. So, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to offend anybody or piss anybody off. But those things need to be tightened up on. We're not paying for our deputies to have a free ride home and we actually pay the rest of any county around. That needs to be rectified in and of itself. But our children need to be paid into so that we don't need so many deputies. We're watching our crime escalate because our communities are falling apart. We need to, we need to support more community building and less of the trying to fix what we've allowed to fall apart. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Mr. Ronnie Morse?
Gentlemen, thank you. Thanks for serving this county with your time. My name is Ronnie Morris. I dress as forty-five Bets Branch Road. I am an electrical contractor in Swain County. I've been here since two thousand and eighteen. And, uh, I have a business ongoing. I'm seventy-four years old and I have no intention of retiring. I have five young men working for me. They're all Swain County, uh, residents, all over under twenty-two years old. But I, uh, interact with the inspection department on a lot of cases because I am an electrical contractor, a whole unlimited license. And I just want to say that we have got some great guys in this department. And I go to the same classes that they go to to try to get their license to where they can serve you in this county. And these exams are tough. There's nothing easy. I think Mr. Siegel's had gone through them and I know that Jason and Gina have. And what I see in these classes now is people that are going in there strictly, they go ahead and they sign up with the state D O I and office State Fire Marshal strictly for the benefit of going through the process to get these certificates because they see the payday. The, these guys are going because they're going to be in six-digit numbers to inspect once they get these certificates. Well, I want to keep the ones that we've got. They're good. They're conscientious and they, uh, reasonable and use good judgment. And I've got a few ideas I'd like to pass along that maybe, uh, I think I heard earlier that maybe there's could be some permit fees adjusted to try to raise some funds for them. But what I see in the county is they, I get called to jobs and when I get there, I'm not on all of them, but a lot of them and remodels. They're halfway in construction. Well, the way I read the North Carolina law, it says a permit must be pulled before any construction takes place. But they'll get halfway in. What stalls them is me. I'm the one that gets some electricity. They'll have a plumber come in. He don't have to do anything. They have the builder. He don't have to do anything. The demo guy doesn't have to do anything, but when they're looking to me, can't you get me this electricity? Not without building inspection, we can't. And you've got this, 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 and this. It's got to be handled. Well, what I see is some of this stuff is even going with a service on a building. So they just won't come in and alter their service. Well, I will do that. I do like pulling permits and being correct. I want to be right with my brothers and this county, but I want safety first. I want human life is the first thing I look at. Uh, I am very well educated in the electrical trade. I've been in it for fifty-eight years. And, uh, but I see that the potential for our, our inspectors to be hired into other, other counties as being something we need to be concerned about. Now, it's my understanding that good inspection offices keep your insurance rates down. And, uh, of course, your fire departments, you know, less fires and obviously you, your inspectors can enter in on that also. But I just, uh, have a few ideas. One thing is I go by a construction site. I don't see any way of knowing if that's, there's a permit pulled. Now, I have worked in fifty plus of the one hundred counties in North Carolina over my life. And I've seen where we're winning the counties and there's an outside board billboard posted where it says who the contractors are. So anybody can walk up and say, well, yeah, he's, he's, he's a contractor. He's probably pulled a permit. I go by buildings to where demolition is being taken place. It is law that demolition, uh, requires a permit. But if you see one of Tim Cochran's containers out in front of a house, chances are they're doing demo and you can charge for that. And so these are just a few things that I wanted to mention. Now, I talked, I worked for contractors. And one of the contractors I worked for is Mark Fortner. And I asked him, could I relay some of his comments about trying to raise some money in this county? And he said, to him, he made it sound simple and it's not as simple as it is. But why couldn't, when all the people coming to ride this train, there couldn't be a dollar a head put on the train to where you could pay some of your employees, such as the deputies, such as your inspectors and these others. I understand we have about a million people influxing into Swain County and I think their population's, what, three, four thousand? And so if they're going to go to the train, why can't the train collect a dollar or two dollars and give it to the county to help raise money for the county employees, not for something else? To get some money in these people's hands so we can keep them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good day. That is all public comment. At this time, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I I remembered something. Gina had emailed us about the dedication for her, for her father, for for the water slide. Could you remind me the date on that, Ms. Gina? Was it June the eleventh?
That's.
June the sixth is the Friday. Um, that's our family reunion weekend. It'll be at Morgan Pavilion. All of our family will be here. We'll be back, we'll be back. Big family until I, um, we will be back, you know? If we, if we could do it back and it's available and y'all are soon will come out, um, but if it's not, then that's.
I I would like to, to do that if 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 that's okay with you guys.
I think we're all consensus that that we are up.
Sorry, I meant to bring that up earlier. I forgot all about that. So.
That is.
Uh, we'll get with Gina and get a time for that. But that's all.
All right. Now I entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.